...of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, let me open up my, goodness, all right, so we are to the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions to this evening's agenda? Yes?
I would like to add an item to the consent agenda, B. I'm sorry. Is that on?
No, it's off now, red.
There you go. Where now it is.
Don't touch it, just talk.
I would like to add consent agenda item B, to please excuse Scott Deener, due to illness.
Motion to add Mr. Deener.
Second.
And a second to add Mr. Deener. And to the consent agenda, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries and added to the agenda. We also have a collective bargaining meeting after tonight's agenda with no action taken afterwards. So with that, any other additions or subtractions to this evening's agenda? Okay, is there a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Yes, Mr. Donilon.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented, as amended.
Second.
It's the full agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry, the full agenda, as, yes, the full agenda. Let's start over again. I move to accept the full agenda for tonight's city council meeting.
As amended. And a second, council member Pashardi, further discussion of the agenda? All in favor of approving the agenda as amended, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We are to citizens' comments. You want to get, okay, we'll get back to you soon. We are to the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as amended.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve the consent agenda as amended. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We have no presentations or public hearings, and we are to item business A, which is approval, authorize the finance director to pay the city council claims. Mr. Crocker, you want to talk to that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, council members, for the record. My name is Noah Crocker, Finance Director for the City of Port Orchard. Business item 7A today, as you know, the council, this will be the last meeting for December for council. We continue to receive invoices and have accounts payable that need to be paid. The City of Port Orchard has an obligation to keep current on its current liabilities. City Council should authorize the finance director to pay claims and provide the claims register to council at the first meeting in January.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Clausen.
Mayor, I move to authorize the finance director to pay city claims and provide claims registered to the city council at the first meeting in January.
Second. Motion and a second to approve the claims for the remainder of the year. Any discussion of that item? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7B, approval of amending an internal local agreement with Kitsap County for incarceration of prisoners. City Chief Marti, so it must be Ms. Cates.
Thank you, Your Honor, city council members. I am having a little trouble with my agenda, so thank you. On October 24th, 2017, the city council approved contract number 00218 with Kitsap County for incarceration of city prisoners. It has since come to the city's attention that portions of the agreement need to be revised. The recommendation of staff is to approve the amended agreement with Kitsap County for jail services for the year 2018.
Yes, go ahead.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the mayor to execute an amended agreement with Kitsap County for prisoner confinement services for the year 2018.
A motion and a, is there a second? A second by Mr. Clausen? Questions about this agreement?
It seems like it's just doing some clarification.
House cleaning, yes. Yeah. Okay. Any further questions? Hearing none, all in favor of approving the, amending the annual agreement with Kitsap County for the incarceration of prisoners, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7C, which is, well, added here today because we were able to come to an agreement with the Police Guild for health insurance benefits, so this will be the adoption of a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Police Guild for medical benefits. Ms. Howard.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. The existing collective bargaining agreements, CBAs, between the City of Port Orchard City and the City, and the Port Orchard Police Guild, Guild, representing both the patrol officer bargaining unit and the sergeant bargaining unit, which are in effect between January 1st, 2016, and December 31st, 2018, provide that the Guild members shall continue to be covered for health insurance under AWC Health First through the end of 2018. Both CBAs, however, recognize that AWC will no longer offer Health First beginning January 1st, 2018. Accordingly, the city and the Guild agreed to reopen negotiations on the singular issue of health insurance to bargain over a suitable alternative health insurance plan if the city was unable to secure suitable alternate health insurance to Health First. The Guild has decided to move to the Left Health and Welfare Trust FX Plan, as well as to continue with the AWC Kaiser Permanente Plan beginning January 1st, 2018, provided that the city would be willing, for 2018 only, to establish the following. The employer will continue to reimburse the patrol officer and sergeant employees $4 for each brand name or generic prescription obtained. Number two, for patrol officer and sergeant employees who enroll in the Left Trust FX Healthcare Plan as of January 2018, a one-time payment into the employee's HRA VIBA account of $100 if the employee enrolls in an employee-only plan, or B, 200 if the employee enrolls in an employee-plus-spouse dependence plan to address the new healthcare plan deductible. Number three, for patrol officer and sergeant employees who enroll in the Left Trust FX Healthcare Plan as of January 1st, 2018, a one-time payment into the employee's HRA VIBA account of $50 to address additional medical impacts of the change to the Left Trust FX Healthcare Plan. Number four, for patrol officers and sergeant employees who enroll in the Kaiser Permanente Healthcare Plan as of January 2018, a one-time payment into the employee's HRA VIBA account of $200 if the employee enrolls in an employee-only plan, or $400 if the employee enrolls in an employee-plus-spouse dependence plan to address the new healthcare plan deductible. And finally, number five, for patrol officer and sergeant employees who enroll in the Kaiser Permanente Healthcare Plan as of January 1st, 2018, reimbursement up to 10% of the employee's actual out-of-pocket costs above the out-of-pocket maximum as stated in the employee's 2000 healthcare plan. The foregoing arrangement has been reduced to a proposed memorandum of understanding between the Guild and the city. The MOU modifies the CBAs in the manner described above. Staff recommends that the city council approve the proposed MOU and authorize the mayor to sign the memorandum of understanding.
Mr. Pashardi.
Mayor, I move to approve the memorandum of understanding between the city and the Port Orchard Police and to authorize the mayor to sign said memorandum of understanding.
Second.
Motion and a second by council member Luke Corelli. Questions or discussion? Yes.
Just clarification, one thing I did not hear when you were reading it is that it's the 2017 healthcare plan. It was the date I didn't hear when you were reading. You just said, I heard 2000, but I didn't hear 17, so that was pretty important as far as knowing.
2018, actually, it's for next year.
I know, but it's, the agreement was made in 2017, which is the important part of this, the carryover and the reason why.
Right.
It's just clarification, that's all.
That's when we entered into the labor agreement. It's only for 2018, and that's when the contract expires.
Exactly.
Other questions or comments? Voting on adoption of a resolution approving the memorandum of understanding, understanding between the city and the Police Guild for medical benefits. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to 7D, which is the Holiday Light Tour. Turn to you, our scribe from that event. Some of us attended the Holiday Light Tour, and Cindy was the scribe that evening, so...
So mainly, I just wanted you all to take a look at this list and make sure that I've put down everything that we agreed upon. Sometimes it's a little dark in the van, it's hard to capture some of the numbers, but this is pretty much the overview of what we decided that evening.
One quick, I'm questioning, the best neighborhood there, it says Rockport neighborhood, and I believe that's the Ridge.
It's the Ridge neighborhood, yes.
Let me get rid of, get rid of Rockport and please put Ridge then. Okay? But it was the Siskin Circle, man, right?
Correct.
There's so many names, the streets out there, okay.
So the rest of this is correct, and you guys all agree, would you like Janine to push this out on Facebook and post it on our website? These are, were our winners for this year.
Yeah.
I mean, we've done certificates and invited people in the past, and we get a couple people to come, but I think the better way to announce it and to get it out to everybody would be, you know...
I like that idea, and what I've actually asked too, is for a presentation to take place in the January 23rd council meeting.
Okay.
To thank our volunteers for the Chimes and Lights Festival. We have such a long list now, and it's always nice to meet the people who put so much into the event. And I also thought that might be a good time to have the award winners come as well, because it's all regarding the holidays.
I know that we took some pictures, I don't know if we did those with cameras or just on phones.
I think we did quite a few.
But if we had, if we had some pictures to go on the Facebook to go with these, I think that would be great.
Yes, that would be real nice.
Could you get those to Brandy, if anybody has any?
I can email if I have a couple, but I don't have a lot of them. I mean, I don't have the top half, I would say, but the houses I can email.
I've looked, I've looked to see what I have as well, and see if we can get those. Or even go out and take them again, when it wasn't quite so dark and rainy and whatever, you know? So, okay.
So get your pictures into Brandy, you're around next few days, aren't you?
Yes, send them to me, please. Scott will be on vacation, so please make me, get it.
Wonderful. Okay, that's item D, and then I have a little presentation here. We've, one of our members here this evening, this is his last meeting, and I thought it would be appropriate that the council and I recognize council member Donlin for his service here on the council, and it says, "In recognition of your dedicated efforts and leadership to the citizens of Port Orchard as council member." So we've made you a very nice plaque, and give you an opportunity to say a few words if you'd like.
Well, yeah, I didn't expect this. Yeah, tonight is my last council meeting, and two years ago, I started out knowing nothing about government, I'd never been involved in it, and was kind of foreign to it. This experience really changed a lot of my opinions. I got a chance to peek behind the curtain and see how city government really functions and participate in it. And I want to, I want to tell everybody here that I feel very privileged to have served with such dedicated and talented people. I mean that. And for the audience, which is a little bit slim, and for the recording, I'm going to tell you a little secret about the executive sessions when we go back there. One thing that is always...
Not too much, no.
I know, I know. I swear. One thing is the constant theme back there, and that is that both bodies, the staff and the city council members, the one question, the common theme is, is this decision good for the citizens of Port Orchard? And that is the truth. And I, in the past, thought maybe that wasn't the case, but it is true. So I feel privileged to have participated in some of the key and pivotal accomplishments that this body has, has done since I've been here. I'm just amazed. Tremont, TBD, changing from a, from a second-class city to a code city. The analogy I use is that is similar to having a driver's permit and getting a driver's license. And so, just with that, I just want to thank the citizens of Port Orchard for electing me and serving for two years. It was, it was quite an honor, and at the end of this meeting, I will yield my seat to my successor, Mr. J. Rosa Pepe, and the citizens of Port Orchard couldn't have elected a better man.
Any very comments? Thanks for those. All right.
I have one more thing I want to say.
Okay, certainly.
Last week, last week, we, we lost somebody, a key person in this town, Brian Petro. You know, it was really sad, I, you know, there was the last link, or one of the last links, I should say, to the past, you know? It was really cool to have him, to go to an event and have Mr. Petro, Mr. Brian Petro, orating, you know, in his very colorful way about the history of Port Orchard and what it was like to grow up in a small, sleepy little town on the waterfront. And, yeah, he'll be missed. Port Orchard lost one of its favorite sons, so...
All right, with that, Mr. Clausen, do you have something from the Finance Committee?
Yes, we had a Finance Committee this evening, as a matter of fact, started at 5:00. We went through a lot of our normal things that we do, primarily looking at sales tax revenue, to see how that was performing, and, and I'm happy to report that it's continuing to come in strong. Through November, I think overall, we're averaging about five and a, or, excuse me, four and a half percent, greater than we did in the previous year, which is always good news. Our REIT revenue is coming in as strong, if you will. The different account balances are healthy and strong, so that was all good news, no unexpected issues there. We did address one unexpected issue, and that is in the Tremont widening project where it appears that we're not spending money quite as fast as we had anticipated and planned, so not sure that that's a problem, but we're not experiencing any cost overruns or anything like that, and the project appears to be on schedule with everything, so it's good news, it was just kind of a, a little bit different news. We also had a report, and Noah's going to go over some of the information about our transportation benefit district as part of what he's also going to include, so you'll see some numbers in regards to that effort. And we dealt with the union negotiations a little while ago. We also had another piece of information that we talked about, and this was in regards to, to kind of refresh the council's memory, we went through a salary survey a few years ago, and the results of that survey was something that we couldn't afford to implement all in the first year. So we phased that implementation, and we're now faced with the, basically, the last year of phasing in, and once we complete this, then we will have implemented the entire recommendations of that survey. Noah passed out a document for the council here that essentially shows that the number of employees by department, the total fiscal impact for 2018 is going to be 55,000 and some change. And you can see how they're broken up by the funds, the different department, general fund versus the street fund and so on. So unless there is an objection by the council, I would like to make a motion, Mr. Mayor, that we go ahead and authorize the Finance Department to implement the final step of the salary survey effective January 1 of 2018. And if a second, I will kind of explain why I'm making the motion tonight.
Second that. Motion and a second, so you want to continue your dialogue?
Yes, if I may. The option that we would have in doing it would be, we could do it tonight and make it effective January 1, or we can wait till the next council meeting, which is January 9th or something like that, which means there would be about 10 days in January that the staff would not benefit by the salary survey. So it really is, by doing it tonight, we can start January 1 versus January 10th.
Salary survey contemplated us taking this in two bites, but it was the direction of the council this last budget cycle, if we could afford to, that we would, we would fully implement this, and as you saw from our revenues, that, you know, we can't afford to, we can't afford to do it, and this brings all of our employees now on par with their peers in other local governments, so I think it's an important piece and a nice gesture to do it effective January, because those folks that don't have, that aren't part of a union, we can't do their pay retroactive, so they would miss out on those 10 days. So we have a motion and a second. Is there other discussion or questions about implementing this, the remainder of the salary survey?
No, this was thoroughly vetted several months ago when we did the salary survey, and so I'm very supportive of this.
It's actually in the budget as well, so it's not like we're spending unplanned.
So with that, Mr. Clausen's motion is to, January 1st, to implement the final step of the salary survey. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. So is anything else for Finance?
Just that we have had a discussion on our capital facilities charge, and we're kind of reviewing that whole issue as it relates to both the water department and the wastewater department, so more to come. It's a pretty in-depth issue that we're, we're exploring and talking about, so...
And the reason that's, we brought up on Finance this evening is that it has, relates to that development agreement.
Right, development agreement issue.
Is what we're trying to get out in front of. The goal is, is that we would have Sharon swapping with her counterpart, Jeff Tarday, who is our land use attorney at the January 9th meeting, so we've still got some more work to do, and I believe we, what I'd heard here just a little bit ago is that potentially we'll continue this, that meeting that we were having this evening, Friday morning at 7:30, is what I, Noah doesn't know that yet, so hopefully you're available.
Friday at 7:00?
7:30.
7:30.
Wait, isn't it crisp? Actually, you know what, I won't be here Friday.
You won't be here Friday?
No, I will be taking my kids to Portland.
Okay.
Trailblazers game.
So after the meeting, then, we'll get our calendars back together.
Yeah, let's get our calendars together.
And try again, okay?
All right.
So it worked for everybody but you, so we'll get back on that.
He's kind of an important piece.
He's an important piece, because he's got the data. So we are, is that it for Finance?
That's it for Finance.
Okay, economic development and tourism?
Yeah, we will be meeting, I think, the second Monday in January, 9:00, here at city council chambers.
Utilities?
We are going to be meeting, actually, the 22nd of January due to the holiday, and that is at 9:30 here at City Hall.
Okay. Sewer advisory?
That meeting is January 18th or 17th?
17th is what the calendar says.
You know what? That doesn't seem right, let me get that corrected. We don't have those meetings on a Tuesday.
Sewer advisors, listed as.
I know, it's listed there, oh, wait. It would help if I had the wrong, right year. It is the 17th, thank you. So Wednesday, January 17th, and that is here at City Hall at 6:30.
Okay, the agenda says West Sound Utilities, so if you could correct that. Brandy, on. Okay, thank you. Land use? Mr. Deener's not here, any of the other members?
They're calling.
We had a meeting, I...
And he gave a report. We reported about it last week.
Last week, that's right, okay, that's right.
We decided on the next meeting.
Yeah, I don't believe you have either.
Rob?
Yeah.
Do you know if this letter from Palmer is going to land use? Or does it need to?
I don't, I don't believe there's a question in that letter, is what the...
I couldn't tell from a quick read, but it seemed like a lot of whining.
So Sharon and Nick have prepared a response. We get, would you like that response?
Yeah, I'd just be appreciating copying on it. I wasn't quite sure what this is about.
If you could just, otherwise I'll forget. I believe you were CC'd, if you could forward that Nick's response to the full council, it'd be great. But I don't, there wasn't a question anywhere in that letter.
Good, okay.
Lodging tax.
Nothing to report.
Okay, and chimes and lights?
Yes, we actually just had a meeting this week, and we are working on the holiday decorations. We have several sources, and we're having staff take a look at quotes so that we can look at replacing the garlands on Bay Street, and we hope to get some great prices by doing it within a certain period of time at the end of the year. So we'll be actually bringing that information to a work study in January.
Okay.
And also, our next Chimes and Lights meeting is January 22nd, and that is 3:30 here at City Hall.
And Noah and his staff are involved in that process, just to make sure we don't have any procurement challenges?
Oh, yes, we are definitely checking into that.
Okay, I see Brandy shaking her head the right way, so...
Yes.
All right. Other, other outside agencies of the Banning meetings? We've got a executive committee meeting on the Highway 16, Highway 3 corridor, study tomorrow, and I think Beck and I will both be at that, and John will too, representing transit, so something to report, I hope, after the first of the year on that.
But I would say, just, we had a West Sound Alliance meeting last Friday, and that group, because it's a short legislative session, and because we do not anticipate any transportation funds available this session, the West Sound Alliance will communicate with each other and collaborate with each other via electronic media, and we will reconvene again in September. We have, of the participants in that, three of the municipal jurisdictions have new mayors and anywhere from three to five new council members, so it's going to be a while, it's going to take them a while to get ready to really look at what the future transportation needs are. So we'll be reconvening in September.
Wonderful. Thank you for that report. Other outside agencies? Okay, and I've got the mayor's report, and just conversation with our building inspector on the progress on the Buy Mart, and they're at the old Kmart site, and the project's moving forward, and they plan to be open in April.
Oh, good, wow.
So just thought I'd share that with you. And then I'd just like to, I guess, wish you all and staff all a happy holiday season. It's been a pleasure this last year, working with all you guys, so I look forward to another productive year in 2018. From there, we are to report department heads. Noah, you have anything for us?
Yeah, I'll go first. Two, two things I want to talk about. First, I've handed out a report here, I'm stepping in for Director Nick Bond. In November 2015, the city council passed an impact fee ordinance, which took effect January 1st, 2016. And in there, the Port Orchard Municipal Code requires that the director provide an annual report on the collection of park and traffic impact fees. So the memo and report in front of you is to address our code. I want to just talk about it real quickly at a high level. For 2017, for our McCormick Woods Parks Fund, we began with $39,000, $39,109 in the fund. We collected roughly $334 of revenue, and we will have about $39,444 for McCormick Woods Park to begin 2018. Our... Our parks, general parks, we began the year with $235,584. We collected $77,821, including park fee and interest earned, for a total of ending balance of $313,405. For both those park funds, we did not have any expenditures in 2017. For transportation impact fees, we have the McCormick Woods Transportation Impact Fee, where we began, we began the year with $463,855 in the fund, received revenues of $55,696, and we made payments of a total of $28,264. We will close the year with $491,290. For our General Transportation Impact Fee Fund, we began, we began the year with $165,431. We added revenue of $226,283. We did not have any expenditures, and we will end the year with $391,714. If there's any questions, feel free to contact myself or Nick. He's on vacation right now, so when he gets back, we can address anything that you have on the impact fee annual report. I also want to talk about, we talked about this briefly in Finance Committee today, but an annual report on our Transportation Benefit District. So far year-to-date, we collected a total of $167,923. We have committed in contracts of $151,703. Most of the expending we expect will occur in 2018 due to some schedule challenges, but we do have budget authority for 2017, 2018, again, going back to the biennial budget concept. We had allocated $152,000 for 2017, and allocated roughly $200,000 for 2018. So anything that we do not expend in 2017 will be reallocated to 2018 to complete those projects. Other than that, that is the only additional reports I have, and...
Mr. Clausen?
I just wanted to comment, excellent report, but just the money from the TBD is going for asphalt repairs, so just, it was committed, but I wanted to make sure everybody understands what it was committed for.
Paving, paving streets. We did a little bit of it this winter, the weather's not going to allow us probably to get any more done this year, but the contract for $151,000's been awarded. Soon as the weather gets warm and dry enough, in April, they'll continue that paving, and then we'll hopefully, in early spring, be awarding another contract to allow us to get going on the Nick, next year, the 2018 allocation of paving.
Do you know if the TBD information is on the website for people to see?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so we can search for it by TBD and find it?
Yes.
It has its own little box.
I don't believe the report is, but we can make sure that that's put up.
Okay.
But I know that there's a whole page dedicated to that.
Got this tonight, so...
No, I, I am familiar with the TBD page, which is not very interesting, but it is informative, I guess, so, so this will be, this will help.
Yeah, we'll make sure it's up there.
We can get this report on there. Anything else from Finance?
Other than that, I want to thank you all for so far a wonderful time here at Port Orchard. Merry Christmas, happy holidays. Going to be exciting 2018, looking forward to it, so thank you.
Ms. Howard, anything from HR? Sister here?
I'm just busy with our medical enrollment, our healthcare, getting this ready for the first of the year, so with our non-reps and our reps, so that's what I'm doing.
All right, Sharon?
Just want to echo Mr. Crocker's sentiments to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, happy holidays, and a Happy New Year, and look forward to working with you all again next year.
Okay, Brandy?
I would like to wish the council and the mayor a Happy New Year and Merry Christmas.
Thank you, thank you. All right, so we are to our next session comment period. Is there anything? Yes, Jerry?
One was a question, because it just came up. Many years ago, you put a tax on the theaters, and that money was supposed to go only to the Parks Department. Is that still just going to the Parks Department?
It's in our, in our biennial budget now, but yeah, it's budgeted in the biennial budget.
Okay, I was, I was just wondering, because it was, I know that some people called the walkway the Parks, but I didn't, so it was used for that previously. So another thing I wanted to ask about is, when you vote on something like the inter-local agreement, not one of you mentioned what was the change? And if we're here watching and wanting to know about the city, how did that change? You just voted to pass it on through, and I don't think that, for myself or the people that are watching, that they have any idea what happened there. And even on the Holiday Light Tour, if you know who's won, and you're going to post it on the internet, you could at least say it. I mean, after Christmas is kind of a blah, who cares type thing, and if you at least went down and said, well, we gave the best neighborhood this prior, or that you were the best neighborhood in that, it would be nice that the people that watch this at least know that. Thank you.
Thanks for your comments. Jane? It's your last opportunity, is it?
Merry Christmas.
All right. So with that, we're heading, the meeting will be adjourned, we're going to go into a collective bargaining meeting, take no action afterwards, so...